Both to order five thirty-four. I'll have... I'll look for a motion first, excuse Jeff.
I'll make a motion to approve, I mean, that Jeff has gone.
Okay. And with that motion and that second, we'll have Sue call.
Councilmember Cantio?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Phillips Zanson? Councilmember Salzweil?
Here.
And Mayor DeMoor.
I'm here. I'll look for a motion now to approve the agenda for this committee.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion or changes? Sue?
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips Zanson, councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantio?
Yes.
And Mayor DeMoor.
Yes. Uh, citizen discussion for items not on the committee agenda. Nobody. Alright, we'll move on to item four, discussion regarding the showboat. Michael?
Good evening, Mayor City Council. The showboat committee is here tonight to provide you an update. It's probably been approximately, I want to say about six months since they've provided their last update. They're moving along pretty good now at this point and uh, they wanted to show you where they're at and take any feedback you might have. Rich LaBard has been helping them through this process and I'm gonna turn it over to Rich.
Okay, thank you, good evening. Uh, we're gonna have a bit of an informal meeting tonight, I hope you don't mind. We have a meeting of the showboat committee, allow me to see it behind me, and then of course, treaty the whole, so uh, we'll probably have you up moving around the room a little bit so you can see all of the show and tele things and then uh, of course we'll be doing a presentation about the 3D model which is up on the screen right now. And then um, I'll be wrapping it up with some financial information. Uh, but first of all, let's start out and talk about um, how we got where we got and uh, I'll turn it over to Lou. We know, I think we can recap on the last meeting is that we, we saw a need, the committee was formed, uh, to repurpose the showboats and then uh, some grant rating happened and we were the fortunate recipients of a million dollars from the state of Michigan and then uh, Rorri got involved as well. And they raised about, where did Mark go? Hundred and thirty thousand, is that correct, Mark? Okay. And then the Chamber of Commerce also raised some money, so we're to this point now where we've uh, gotten through a design phase or concept, excuse me, let me back up, we got through a uh, conceptual phase and I think we showed you that last time and we can revisit that here in a minute too, but uh, let's start off with some introductions real quick and we'll talk about the showboat committee members and so if you'd like to stand up and introduce yourselves as committee members, I'd appreciate it, starting in the back of the room. Mr. Munt?
Mark Munt.
Are you in the committee?
Yeah, that's you David.
That one's our mom.
Uh, Larissa Morgan?
Liz Baker.
Carol McGregor.
Shannon Parfio.
Lou D'Agostino.
Alright. Well, obviously, this is a pretty large group and so uh, what we did was we broke it down into a smaller working group which is consists of about six, seven people. Um, I'm the project manager of this project. Committee representatives for the working group are Lou D'Agostino, Mark Munt, Liz Baker, Carol McGregor, and then we also hired in on Chris Chamberlain, he's our owner rep. And probably the only guy that owns a boat of this size. And uh, Carol McGregor's been helping us out with the drafting and some of her drawings in the back, we'll go over those a little bit later. And then Shannon Parfio, just joined us recently too for interior design. Lou, you wanna take over and talk about how we got to this point?
Sure.
Alright. I'll leave the agenda for you.
Thank you. Well, first off, thank you for letting us come and giving an update. But uh, how we got to this point that we're at right now is like Rich said, you guys are all aware of the issue that there was with the boat, that there still is with the boat, how we formed the committee, this so on and so forth. And we've already presented to you the company that the engineering company Sea Fly that we did hire to do the engineering as far as the, where we are in the process with them. We had a meeting with them last week, last Wednesday. And basically, all they need from us is just some interior finishes and some other weights to be able to give this, the boat, how it's gonna sit in the water, how high up it's gonna sit, when it's fully capacitated, fully, fully loaded, excuse me, and when it's empty. So, we're at that point now and once we get all that aired out and back to them, then our next step would be to put it up for bids. To have a build. And as a committee, I think we're pretty proud of where, how far along we have come in this process. It's been a long process. Up some hills, down some hills, but I think we're, we're heading in the right direction. And it has been, has been an effort of everybody on the committee. The first committee and the subcommittee as a whole. Everybody has worked together to get, to get it to this point. And we have um, touch base with the fire inspectors in town and we did struggle through some early early circumstances with the DEQ, but we'll round all that now, so uh, after saying all that, I guess we wanna move on, unless you guys have some questions? As to... No questions?
Just one question, I know there was a deadline of using the funds within one year. How are we looking on meeting that deadline?
As far as I know, maybe Mike or Rich want to lay it on this, but as far as I know, we are entitled to one extension. And talking to other entities around here that receive grants similar to ours, I've been told in conversations with them that if we have the money basically spent in that timeframe, then they're good at that. Basically, we're all good. It was our concern too as a committee, that's why we tried to push it as quickly as we could. But Chris also brought a point that and the committee has made a decision that this boat probably will not be put in the water until next spring. Just because of the the conditions in the winter. Just, I'll step back maybe. The boat's gonna take approximately six to nine months to build.
Alright.
So if we start in June, by the end of June, you guys can do the math. It wouldn't be smart.
I've launched a lot of boats, but I've never launched one on an ice rink before, so...
So, we, so in all reality, it'll probably be next March or April. If everything goes the way it's going, it could be even further along. I mean, it could be June, July, you know, but our goal now is somewhere in that timeframe.
Lou? We have an update from Senator Hillman, I had extensions, so...
So hi, Ed Murger with, with Dave Hillman Grant's office. And sorry, Dave couldn't be here tonight, but regarding, um, so there is a deadline of September thirtieth for this fiscal year budget. We're to have to go in and make some changes to the grant, but that's perfectly workable, so we can do that.
Thank you.
Thanks. Perfect timing.
Yeah.
That was totally unexpected, by the way.
Right. So I guess at that point, I didn't wanna hand it over to you. Just so you know, some of the background, Carol made all the conceptual drawings from ideas that she was received from the committee and just looking at the showboat. And so, she should be applauded, she, through this whole, through this whole procedure, every time we pulled his plans out, even Sea Fly gets mentioned. They were expecting something, me and Greg Cantio, some of you others can relate to this, the old fireman Matt Kinn. So, they were really impressed by the drawings that we did and it's, Carol should be commended for, for doing that. And the committee too, that before we branched off to the subcommittee should be commended too, because it brought it to the point where we had to shrink the committee down to make more um, to...
Make it more efficient.
Make more efficient, yeah.
It wasn't efficient.
Thank you. But uh, do we wanna move on to Chris next?
Well, let's talk about uh, the conceptual drawings from earlier. Do you have all of them, Chris?
Yeah.
Okay. And Carol, do you wanna chime in on any of these? And she, she, Carol received all the feedback from the committee members and this is what she put together. And she really helped everybody visualize um, what we're looking for in terms of the next generation of the showboat. You can see, let's go back to the very first one, do you have one, Chris? There's some really stark differences in this next generation. Um, one, more enclosed space than before, which is very nice, makes it more rentable. Two is that it steals elements from the old boat, but also puts some new elements on and make it more streamlined and modern looking, so for example, is, is the top railing wire, I can't quite tell from here. Okay. So if you look at the top rail there, that's wire, where I think now we have chain link fence maybe?
Well, we have a chain link fence.
Right. But it, it makes it look a little more streamlined up there. On the very back of the boat then, you'll see too, there's a little inside deck. And that's a little departure from what we have now. Um, and the top of the boat, of course, the wheelhouse is very, very much larger than the existing one. So it does borrow from the old, but still um, look to the future, I think. Is that a good way to describe it, Carol, you think? Okay. Again, keeping some of the gingerbread, but not, not so much gingerbread that it looks ridiculous. I think we've all set along a really nice design. And this one is bigger, we're looking at um, hundred and ten by thirty?
Thirty by a hundred.
Thirty by a hundred. Is the new size. You can go on to the next one, Chris. Any questions about this drawing?
What's your move?
What's your move?
You recall?
It was about twenty-eight, about ninety-two, somewhere along the instance. We decided to go on Chris's recommendation to get it down the road, fifteen foot.
If you go over fifteen, you start pulling super special permits and your moving costs are more, it just doesn't make sense.
On his recommendations, we decided to just make it simple. Two pieces will become a domino.
On the uh, starboard?
Correct, yeah.
Chris? On the starboard side, that's the right side of the boat, you'll see there's three entrances on the main level. The two double doors in the back is only gonna be a service entrance. Door in the middle will be the main entrance, much like we have now, and the door in the front uh, will be just an ingress egress from the main room to the deck. Okay, next. Okay, first deck interior, showing um, a rather large open room, I think there will be two columns in the middle?
Yeah.
And then the grand staircase, and we'll get into the design, interior design stuff later, but this is generally the layout. We do have an elevator on this one for ADA accessibility, that's in the, yep, there you go, for left corner of the drawing. And it's our anticipation that we will keep that bow open uh, to the public all the time as well. Where the current boat is locked up, this boat will be able to go on and off the bow pretty frequently. Okay, any comments on this one?
Will there be sliders on the front of that to get out to the bow?
Yeah.
That's the plan. The, the committee had an idea of keeping it as open as possible, so that you can get that nice fresh air in.
You get a better idea on the model, you'll see all the openings. You'll see all the openings on the model. There we go. You'll see all the openings, uh, windows and doors, there'll be more prevalent on the 3D view when I show you a little bit.
Yep. On the bottom part of the staircase there, you'll see there's a little area for a bar as well. And then on the upper part of the staircase to the top of the drawing, there's a serving area, so you can have a banquet type food served right there. Okay, and this is the second deck and the third deck. Second deck again, big open room, storage space in the back, elevator coming up. Um, and then there's a door to ingress, or egress out of the rear deck, just for maintenance purposes, that's really not any place the public's gonna be, it's just for maintenance of the back of the boat. And then uh, this is the deck that only has one stairway, correct? There's two. There's two, okay. We were required by the fire marshal to have uh, two sets of stairs and that was something we compromised on too. Third deck again, uh, we call this the wheelhouse room, a large, open meeting room. And uh, sliders again, I think, are what we're looking at in the back. And uh, just some counter space on the front of it. Any questions on the second and third deck? Okay, these are some elevations. Boarding bed and siding, sliding windows. Any other standout features there? Flagpole in the front, which copies the existing design?
Well, the back deck, the back deck, the reason why we put the back, one of the reasons why we put the back deck up is we plan on putting a illuminated sign, my key light, that can be changed to, for events in town, events that are gonna be on the showboat, if somebody's getting married there or something. Just instead of, we, we opted to do that instead of doing like we do now with the Christmas tree and Valentine's or the guitar for the summer concerts. We opted to step that up into the 21st century, so to speak. And we have um, United Signs working with us to make a sign for us. It's approximately, it'll be, I believe, four feet by eight feet? Four feet.
Like an LED?
Yeah, LED.
Like this, can you guys see this?
Yep.
Very bright.
And it'll be facing the back, which everyone sees in that world, so we'll see that going down the history.
Do we have to do any variances in the sign ordinance and uh...
Most likely this will have to go through um, something. And, and the committee's aware of that.
Yeah, we, we spoke with Mike about it. No one's given us a blessing, but we spoke with Mike and he thought, and this might just could happen. And I'm not throwing you under the bus, I'm just...
I just wanted to make, add the word to it.
No, it isn't adding the word. The committee's aware of that, yes.
You're not in the historic district there, are you?
No.
Well, we're in the water.
Steve wouldn't like that.
And that brings, brings up a good point, through this whole procedure, nobody wants to take any kind of ownership on this, as far as we've gone to the Coast Guard and other entities. And no one wants any part of it, basically. You know, what do we gotta do? Well, is it gonna float down the river? No. The Coast Guard said, well, it's not, we don't care. But in saying that, the engineers are engineering it too. I'm gonna turn to Chris for a point.
Uh, I believe it's ABS standards, which is American Boat Building Standards, it's, even though the, the won't be inspected by the Coast Guard, it's totally up to code, it's not something that's and, and we're having an additional stability test done as well. Um, just like you have a structural analysis of a building done, this'll tell you that capacity, if, say someone, the, they're getting married on shore and everybody runs to the one side of the boat to throw in the rice or whatever, the boat's not gonna tip over. And it's not even, you won't even notice it, that's why they do these uh, stability analyses. And that's, to me, that's one of the most important things that you're getting for your money through the engineering firm.
Do they do that test here, or are they gonna do that test where she's being built?
No, that's all done in computer design before it's even, before we even bid it out.
We think of everything on this committee.
They can, they can tell you right now, I can tell you, because this was part of our last conversation, that for X many people on the boat, if the boat's at capacity, it will sit four inches further down in the water versus if there's nobody on the boat, and I can tell you that uh, for every six tons we add onto the boat, the boat goes down one inch. And, so they can do all of these calculations in the, in their software and tell you, answer all those questions.
Are the building officials involved with permits or inspection of this at all?
There are no committee that has built it and washed his hands of the tools.
We have uh, solid out feedback from the fire marshal, by the way, he's about the only one we can really get to reluctantly chime in on it, just because we wanna make sure that it's safe for everybody. Again, it's a structure that's floating and a lot of people don't wanna put their hands on it, so... Okay, so we move on? Alright, and this is the lighting plan. Uh, okay, Carol's put a lot of work into this, the plan is to have ceiling fans so we can keep air circulation. We anticipate, you know, you'll be able to turn them all on at once or turn them off individually if it's, if it's too much for them in terms of coolness, but Carol's gone as far as putting a electrical plan together too. Next. And that's just the third deck, and then up on the top, you'll see some seating capacities and uh, we've determined two hundred and eighty-one people is what we can efficiently seat on this boat. Fire marshal might actually give us additional capacity based on his calculations, but two hundred and eighty-one is a pretty good sized party on the, on the structure. And then uh, third deck, you can see a layout if you would have uh, like a conference table and some chairs in there.
Is the third deck, the open areas, that gonna be utilized for like outdoor seating?
Here's the seating chart.
Yep, right there. Next page.
Rich? You can have like a kitchen facility for caterers?
Okay, so, Sue asked a good question, will there be a kitchen facility for caterers? Well, we want to, to the greatest of our ability, um, not have water in this structure because it's brings a whole other level of complication to it. And there's no bathrooms I'd rather, so catered food will have to be brought on and restrooms will have to be off-site as well. And that'll be in, proposing to put the restrooms in the old DPW building, which is just a short walk across the riverwalk to that building, so... Again, in terms of safety, we don't want open flames on the boat either, so we're not gonna allow uh, the little burners or candles or anything like that, we wanna make sure this is a safe environment for people to be in. So any catered food that'd be brought in and, and kept on electric warmers? Good question. Any questions on the seating arrangement? This is just conceptual, of course. I'm sure people can be creative and fit a little more on there if they want to. Next.
That's the end of the...
That's the end of it. Okay. Any questions about the, the conceptual side of it? Okay. So, um, as Lou mentioned, we did hire Sea Fly, they're the designers and they're turning this into a, a real live working set of drawings. And Chris will walk you through the 3D model, next.
Okay, now don't give me any grief, because this has got the uh...
Colors.
Wrong, the colors here, uh, I didn't choose these colors for your boat. And uh, we're not gonna paint it that color. Pretty sure on that.
Keep in mind, Sea Fly is based out of Louisiana, so if you don't think about sports, it's LSU's...
I asked them to update this, they sent it to me, I couldn't get it to open, the computer kept freezing up on me, so this is the model from uh, our meeting last week.
Don't, don't freeze.
Don't freak, come on.
Yes.
Okay, that's looking straight down from the top, I'll get a frontal view here. So there's kind of a side view of the boat and you don't really see rails on the third deck, because there's cables that'll be going through there, but uh, what you see, pretty much everything you see here is going to be made out of steel. So it's, this is all structural related to the boat and uh, the railings will even be steel as well, just for a maintenance factor, you don't have any wood that's going to uh, require extensive upkeep. I'm gonna kinda do a 3D turn here, if it'll let me do it. Come on. So we can do a... So this is all structural and um, as you look at the hull, which would essentially be from the very bottom to the first floor level, uh, there's some adjustments that have gotta be made, it's disproportionate right now, they started by giving us a six-foot hull, which is, if it was sitting next to the dock, would be a three-foot step up onto the boat, so, but we have to, like we said, we're still getting some uh, details of equipment, tables, chairs. Once we have a pretty accurate list of our weight, um, with the, with all the accessories on the boat, I'll say, uh, even the weight of the carpet and things like that, then we will adjust that height somewhat, it'll be more proportionate, then it'll be more even with the dock, so it'll be um, we're doing as much as we can to make this as easy for handicap accessibility. Be able to roll on, roll off, is the mentality behind it, as opposed to having, to have a ramp and uh, having someone have to adjust that all the time. Things of those nature. Uh, the bow of the boat here, even though it looks like it goes elevated, that's more of an aesthetic thing from the front, uh, from the exterior of the boat, if you're on the deck behind that railing, you'll be able to roll right up to the front of it, if you're in a wheelchair, right up to the very front of the boat and roll right inside to the first floor, all the way into the elevator, there isn't steps. Obviously, we have staircases, but we're trying our very best to keep it as accessible to everybody as possible. I can show you any particular view, if there's, if there's anything you wanna see in particular?
It's around the back.
Sure.
You said that uh, the trim or the railings are gonna be made out of steel, assuming powder coated?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what we're gonna do, everything that way, and then we shed longevity out of it. The other part of it too is, since you're not mandated to haul the boat out every five years for standard marine inspection, uh, we've talked to the engineers and we've asked them to accommodate for that, so the thickness of your boat is a lot thicker, so if fifty years from now, the boat's still, if it never gets painted for fifty years, the bottom of the boat isn't gonna leak. It's thicker, they, they, they have a formula for how fast steel rots away in wa, in fresh water and they've accounted for that, so...
At this point too, we're we're gonna try to work something in there where the paddle boat would probably be made out of aluminum. And we're just gonna have it just enough into the water, and we're gonna have a little motor on it. So we want it to turn to give it the effect of a pellet, obviously, but it'll just give us that effect of a little water.
Kinda like a rotisserie, but...
And putting some work in there, just to give it another...
For, for the fifty-year maintenance plan, if you do have to get that out, is it relatively easy to pull that up over fifty years at a time, or what's that?
Can I show you a picture from my boat that's almost identical to this, it's pretty similar? I had uh, exactly that conundrum last year and I was able to come to I have these giant airbags and basically, put them underneath the boat, you pull your boat up to the boat ramp and you put the airbags underneath it and then you inflate them and it will roll just like they built the pyramids on logs right up out of the water, I'll show you how I did it on my boat. Soon as it explodes.
By the way, while Chris is going to ask, are there any other questions you guys?
Are you taking any pieces off that boat? And putting it in there, symbolically or otherwise?
First plan's a good question, our first plan was to do that, but as we've traveled along this road here, we decided, since we're gonna be spending a lot of money and putting things into it, we're gonna do, everything's gonna be fairly new. You know, we're gonna try to salvage some of second, third, probably third and fourth phases to turn more of that, those buildings possibly into museums, so we are gonna try to keep the paddle wheel and some of the other artifacts and, and work it into a museum. And since you brought that point up, we are gonna try to incorporate those plaques that you saw before throughout the, the showboat. Or something similar to them, so people can see the history of the boat, boats prior to this boat. So yeah, we are, we are trying to keep it um, in tune historically as much as we can, we did decide...
They kinda um, like, we find a sign in front that gives you the history of the boats, you know, like on the approach?
Well, we could...
Like we have them at that part in most areas.
Yeah, the museum, Lisa is not here, she's on the committee, but she mentioned something about she wanted to put some of those out there so that people who walk in the trails and stuff
Yeah.
could, could get more of, yeah. No, that's, we're, we're trying to incorporate all that, so people will see where it came from and where it's headed.
Has there been any interest in any auction? People buying parts of the old boat for sentimental reasons?
We haven't got to that point.
Fundraising or whatever?
But, we are gonna do something like that, 'cause I, I don't know if this is field any calls, but I have for people that are interested in buying something, because they can't afford to give, give much, but they want something that backed from itself. Yes, we are, we will be looking into that. You know, basically, the next step after we get the um, engineering's blessings and everything, and put it out to bids so we know where we're at financially. Our, our, our goal was as a committee, when we first put the committee together, was to raise over a million dollars. Thank you to Dave Hillman Grant. He made that, half of that easier, but we still do have to raise some more money and if I could go on to what we talked about.
Yep.
In order for this to work, the boat to work, we are gonna have to do some remodeling in the heaven station or the DPW garage. The bathrooms, changing rooms, and Carol, again, has got, has some drawings, but we're not... And Carol, again, has got, has some drawings, but we're not working on them yet until we get the boat to a point where we can start looking at that and start to fundraise on that. And we may have to fundraise more for the boat. We don't know if a million dollars is going to cover it all. Actually, we got a little bit more than that, but we don't know until we get some real numbers. Chris is ready.
Okay, so this is my boat in Lansing. It's remarkably similar in size. Mine's 44 by 110, so, and it's three stories. It's enclosed. This boat's been in the water for, oh, it was 17 years when I hauled it out. And I came across this method, which is kind of taking, changing the marine industry. Traditionally, a boat like yours or mine, you drive it to the boatyard. You take it down the coast or across the lake to wherever the shipyard is and they have like a bathtub essentially. Bring your boat in, they close the bathtub and pump the water out or any one of another number of contraptions. But being inland, you're really limited on your ability to do stuff like that. So rather than take my boat apart, which would be similar to like what you're doing in a few thou, in a lot of pieces and then you expose all the interior and things like that, I stumbled across this method, which is really starting to change things up. And basically we put a number of these airbags, wrong way, under, under the boat as you can see. And then you just hook a cable system up to it and you pull it right up. And this is, this is my semi truck and trailer I use for my smaller boat that's 70 feet long. And so I just hooked up, you can see we just hauled it right up out of the water and locked it and painted the bottom. And so I can tell you with a pretty degree of certainty that it can be done on your boat without any problems. You just take up the parking lot while you're doing it.
How big of a boat launch do you need to do that on?
Same size as the boat. I mean, I could see yours coming up there where the rowing equipment is at your public boat ramp. There would be a little bit of adjustment, you know, they might have to move some railings and things like that. But I don't see why this would be a problem 50 years from now or 20 years from now if you wanted to do a checkup on it or whatever. That's no problem. The displacement, that you could put enough airbags under the boat to have the boat three or four feet out of water, floating in the water before you can take it out. So if you just wanted to look at it without blocking off your park, so to speak, that wouldn't be a problem either. You wouldn't be, I wouldn't recommend doing maintenance to the boat while it's in the water because you don't, you have to have collection for paint and that kind of thing, but to, for an inspection, that wouldn't be too much of an issue.
And how do you lug it back in the water?
Well, it's downhill just enough. Actually, the, so basically this is the tricky part that really I learned on the way. It took me 20 hours on the way out and 10 hours on the way back in because I learned in the process. And it's all about changing the angle of the boat. If you make it roll uphill, it'll come out a lot easier. And the same thing, you just deflate the airbag at the back and the boat wants to roll downhill. Even on a flat surface, you just change the angle, the boat wants to roll. Just a little push with a loader or a fork truck or something, it'll, it'll go. Nothing about my boat.
Okay, so some other things we've been working on too as a committee, we've been talking about heating and cooling, security systems, fire suppression and multimedia. So we think we need a structure with wifi and maybe some presentation screens and that sort of thing. So we always looked at this as if we could design the perfect boat, what kind of things would we want on? So we keep talking about these things with hopes that we have it in the budget. But yeah, we do envision something that we can use more than, you know, a few months out of the year, we'll use it year round, make it rentable. And then we'd probably have to have someone running this boat as well, once it gets up and up and running, so to speak, just to monitor the activities on the boat. You know, get out of sight or anything, whether you need someone there to just keep an eye on the structure. Any questions about the design, the 3D model or where we are today?
You said that you'll have to hire somebody to basically manage the boat and that person's being paid out of where?
What we're anticipating is that hopefully it's generating enough revenue to pay for itself. And so that person could be paid for all those ones.
And if not?
Then we have to go to plan B.
We address that. Our plan when we first put this committee together was to raise enough money and have sort of like an adowment fund for maintenance because I've been with the boat and a lot of people have been longer than I have, but I've been with this last boat here and that was always a problem with the boat. So myself and Liz put this together, that was near top of the list, if not the top of the list. We don't want to burden the taxpayers. We don't want to burden generations down the road and we're gone with maintenance. But we are addressing it. If it all comes to fruition, we are going to try to raise enough money to put some money away and it'll be sort of like the cable TV, only the interest will be used for repairs. And like Rich said, you know, there'll be money raised and Rich, this isn't the rec department. The boat is now in the rec department.
Yeah, we're looking at it like a park structure, so we're basically using it as the same rental method that we use for parks. It's a little more involved, of course, but.
Yeah, and that was done to, to, to open up for grants too.
We're going to develop a business model similar to what Hudson built in with their Terra Square. Utilize it as a rental center, community center, things of that nature. One of the advantages we have in this aspect is that what's put into HEDC is, and we can operate it year round, which then will allow us to plan properly, generate revenue year round.
Hudson was a fantastic job in that.
Yes.
Yeah, we got a very good feedback from Hudson Miller. They were in the black in the first year, I think they said.
Yeah.
So we're hoping for the same success.
I would think so. I won't make any assumptions as to the numbers you make, but off of the three different boats that I ran, the one being pretty close to identical to this, I don't see any problem with you guys making more than enough to cover your maintenance and whoever's in charge of scheduling and running the operation. I think you'll do just fine.
You can incorporate parts in that too, the rental fee, security deposit, insurance.
Can't hear you, Mike.
Oh.
Sorry. No, you're good. You can incorporate part of that cost into the rental fee, security deposit, and then put in insurance right around there and says, you know, money's going to be there.
It'll be a learning situation for the public, the city, but again, our purpose was, our goal was to repurpose the boat. We wanted to head in that direction to be facility where people could use it year round, rent it. And I really think it's the right person, marketing and everything. I think there's, if there's a marketing, who, you get buried in a boat, a car is in a boat. It's unique.
Yeah, it counts to be in the boat.
You could, yes.
Bill Simonson already said he'd do the future on the boat.
Bill Simonson, no point. We could use that market.
Okay, if there's no additional questions, then we'll move on to the next phase, which will be the interior design. And this will require a little show and tell, so we all might want to get up and go see what Shannon has brought.
Can you guys hear me? I will speak up. So first of all, if you want to come over here, you might as well just run it around. But what we've come up with is we're trying to keep the traditional colors that the original boat had. So we want that to still be recognizable. The boat itself is going to be pretty recognizable as, you know, very similar to the original one. So we're looking at a black color, we've got colored ones here. It's standard, like black, white for the main part of the boat. We're going to use a red that's not orange and not purple, hopefully a really nice cherry red for the, for the back and for some of the trims. Thank you. This is my help. Yep. And then the decks, I'm actually just proposing to use a gray for the decks. So we really want it to look like a boat. We don't want it to disappear and get too ornate or not fit into the feeling of Lowell, which it's called vernacular. It's like a look that is developed over time in a certain place. And that's kind of what we want to do here. We want to keep it within the vernacular of what Lowell is used to, the beautiful old buildings. It's going to be a beautiful looking boat, but have some modern parts to it. And the other fun thing we're going to do, we'd like to do is impose, is to use the, this blue, which is called hate blue. It's about haunted, it's like a traditional color for ceilings in boats and cottages. It actually comes from the south, but it comes from the 1800s. They felt that this blue kept evil spirits away from their boats and cottages. So if you wanted to use that, and actually I found some photos with those color schemes, if you want to come up and look at them. It's really traditional to use the gray porch floor and that blue on the ceiling. I've heard other things like it keeps mosquitoes away, but I don't believe it. So just for kind of an overall look, some ideas for the inside, we're proposing to do a coffered ceiling on the main floor, which we feel like should be more important on the floor. That's where, you know, that's where the main table would be for wedding or things like that. And I'd like to paint that blue on the ceiling in between the coffers. So, and you know, what style we chose of the three styles that I put together would affect like how detailed these, these things would be and how ornate or simple they would get. So each item can kind of get more ornate, like we're going to have posts inside. Do we want them to be more ornate with gingerbread or do we want to keep them relatively simple and square and elegant? You know, so you guys can look at these if you want to walk up here. And then we were thinking rainscouting on that main floor too, like under the windows. So that would give it a little bit more importance and make it a little bit more celebration type feel. And then on that second floor, that ceiling, I'd like to do a tray ceiling and do like a tin ceiling, which doesn't have to be tin. Now they have like vinyls that look like tin. It could be all different colors and that, of course, depends on our color scheme too. But you can kind of coffer that outside edge, which points up the cool shape of it and then have that tin, which is very appropriate for that, you know, style of the boat. And on that second floor, this is just an example, actually the ship lap board, that would be appropriate. Try to ignore everything else in the photo, it's better, but the ship lap is super cool. Instead of just your plain, what you've seen, you know, six inch ship lap. This is very authentic. It's got the strip in the middle and I think that would look really great on that second floor. And then the third story, we want to do something really fun up there because that room is going to be a real draw, I think, for everyone. They're going to want meetings up there. It's just going to be a cool spot for conferences and things like that. So I've got all kinds of ideas for up there. I want to do maps of like the Grand River and the Flat River. I think I'd like to put those on the wall, like wallpaper. And we'll see, you know, it just depends on where we land, what the style. So we'll move on over there. I kind of want to point out, I tried to choose three different styles that would be appropriate for the boat. And I kind of go from, and I gave my own names, trying to avoid names that people don't like, but still present the style. So this one, this is the American classic style. I really fell in love with the stars when I saw them, they seemed really appropriate for the boat. And then I chose a fabric that has blues as well and Michigan wildlife and Michigan plants. And I just love that because I grew up in Michigan and mostly in the woods, run the fields. I was an outdoor kid and, and that just, I just love that whole feel. And then the papers, all of the products that you're looking at here would be something like this in commercial gray, very durable. So you know, what you're looking at might not be the exact product, but I'm trying to show you like the color and the look that we're shooting for. So I would use paper. This one has like silvery tones, super pretty. And keep in mind, we're doing this not just something that we like, but to attract people who want to rent this for different occasions. So I think the silvery blues and these soft browns that I chose for this one, they'll lend itself to like doing bunting at the Fourth of July or doing other colors that aren't going to clash with it because you know how weddings are, everyone wants to choose their own colors. So we're just trying to keep it a little bit more elegant and simple. That's kind of the theme now for people. They're, they're more into, they want it to look historic, but they don't want it to be too fancy and ornate. They just don't feel comfortable with that. So that's why they're having weddings and farms and places like that. But we want them to have weddings on our boat. So if you want to look up here, I've got some, you know, silvery metals we would use. And actually, these pictures on each vignette are just, I tried to pick a staircase that would reflect the style. This one would be very elegant and simple, lots of white painted woodwork because that staircase is going to be the center focus for the whole boat. It's just going to be beautiful and that's where they're going to want photos. And I'm envisioning at the top of the stairs, doing a huge mirror with fabric on either side. So that's why I have some fabric showing that's probably the only place we'll really have. But that'll be like the, the place that everybody wants to get their photos taken. And we'll have a wonderful chandelier over that staircase too. And we're going to do our stars. This has little stars on it, but this is actually a great big star like this. So that's why I'm calling American classic. And then this one is really a lot of fun. It's vintage, it's kind of like the 1920s when everything was becoming industrialized. It's actually, the word for it is steampunk, but not many people know that, but Rich did. That was really a quest. He's the one that brought it up. I'm like, yeah, that's it, that's what I did. I just didn't want to use that word.
If people come ride the boat and dress up just to be on the boat.
Just to do that, yeah. So it's retro and this is a really perfect picture of it because they really liked industrialization, like shiny metals. They liked it to look old and kind of like worn, you know, it was a very rich look. Kind of like, kind of like the gentleman's smoking club kind of look of the 1920s. So it is vintage and it is old, but I want to just present that for a different look to, you know, give you guys some options. Again, silvery wallpapers that are high use rated. And of course, everything that we would choose would be for commercial grade and, you know, durability. And then this one is really fun and appropriate too. It's more ornate. I'm calling it Main Street Historic and I took the liberty of using my own showroom across the street, the apartment upstairs in the Lowell State Bank Building is the building that I remodeled in town years ago. Ran my show about it. But this is the look, it's like very rich, still not over the top like you would see in Louisiana or down south. Not over the top Victorian, but very rich, warm colors, just more ornate, golds. You know, you can see the golds in the fabrics, gold. I would use like brushed brass, whoops, sorry, brushed brass metal and then those rich dark patterns on the carpets. And you can see that it would be very beautiful to do something like that too. So basically we looked at all of these last week and I'm going to leave it up to you, Rich, to say what you will about that.
Well, the working group really looked at all three of these and there's pretty much consensus that we want to make a recommendation to the committee and the council that we choose the American classic. We just like the style, it feels, feels like small town America, Americana, red, white and blue. And so that's the ones that we recommend we go with. There's any objections open in the air, but we'd like you to support our recommendation and let us choose American classic.